There's no rule that requires anything.
Yeah.
Bring your Honda pullover.
You're a fashion plate in the middle.
Call the committee of a hall meeting to work.
Harvey?
Here.
Levin? White?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Today we're holding a committee of a hall meeting to discuss a couple of topics. And one of them is fire department staffing and the other is TIP funding. I guess I'll turn it over to Village Administrator Greg Jackson.
The recent conversations with staff regarding budgeting and other functions. Came up with two issues that we felt we had to bring to the board's attention. One of them is being the staffing needs of the fire department, especially as for teams to emergency medical services and paramedic service in the evenings. And then the other has to do with the newly approved TIP district and the opportunity for various programs and how we would potentially fund those programs, but also getting a sense from the board how you want us to prioritize those projects. So with that, I think turning it over to Chief Street. Most of them are Justin.
Whatever you want to call him.
And let him go ahead and present.
All right, sounds good. Well, thanks for setting this up and thanks for a few minutes of your time to talk about something that's pretty important to me anyway, usually in the fire department. I'll leave a couple of minutes at the end for Pat.
Thank you.
Now, I can talk about this for a couple hours if you want, but I'll keep it to about thirty minutes. So I just had a little packet of information to help us follow and keep me on track and I'll kind of fill in some of the details as we go through it. But ultimately, this isn't just a what the department problem actually. I mean, this is a nationwide issue for really any fire department, fire EMS department that's not fully funded, a big career agency. Anybody that's smaller, part-time personnel, volunteer, they're all struggling with being able to find good people and keep good people. And there's no simple answers for it either. So what I'll do tonight is kind of talk through the problem, how we got here, what we possibly might be able to do about it, and kind of why the problem exists. For those of you who know, I was away at the Fire Academy doing a kind of extensive program. This is one of my research topics for this program, did some pretty extensive research on it. So I'm just pretty familiar with why the problem exists and not exactly familiar with how we can fix it. Because what fixes most problems is a lot of money, right? We know we don't have a lot of money. So we'll just talk through the issue and talk through some of the possibilities for the end or at the end, and then ultimately, it's going to be up to you guys to figure out how we go about it for the future. So page two is just kind of how we got here. I'm not going to insult your intelligence and read through this, but essentially what this just shows is that nineteen forty-nine, the fire department was established here, all volunteer, all village residents, just started the department because they knew it was a need and to help the village. No pay, no compensation, nothing like that. To the whole reference is that everyone on the fire department was from the village. Not that all residents were. Right, right. Sorry, I just spoke. But all the people on the fire department, the initial group was like eleven or something like that. All eleven were village residents. And in fact, this is a story for another day as well, but the village ordinance, I believe, still reflects that you need to be, I think the wording is district resident or village resident to be on the department. So that's something we need to firm up at some point. But nonetheless, that's not where we're at today. But so, yeah, everybody in the fire department back then, and really, the next couple pages will show a little more of what I want to talk about too. Up until mid to late seventies, everybody in the department was essentially one of the department residents. Maybe north side design, maybe south, very southern part of Pleasant Valley, but that's kind of changed over, and we'll talk about that in a little bit too. But even back in the fifties and sixties, the calls went to the chief's house and then they put out the sirens and stuff like that. So we've evolved to now, even though we don't have any full-time personnel on our side of the building, we run a pretty professional organization with all part-time folks. We have coverage around the clock within the station, whether it's hourly paid people or they're on stipend and then they get the pay when the telephone goes out for their call. So this page just kind of showed the evolution over the years of how we got from just completely volunteer to kind of where we're at right now. Page three is just kind of a visual, a nice little visual of kind of what I was talking about before. This is, the latest, the last, or the oldest roster I could find is nineteen ninety-nine, it would be the fiftieth anniversary. And the highlighted names on here are village residents at that time, and that's almost the whole department still. So as of nineteen ninety-nine, almost the whole department was village residents, other than a few. And put the page to four, that's where we're at now, I mean, you can almost count on your hands how many village residents we have on our department. And this is just a function of a couple of things. We don't get as many village residents applying. We get a lot of people from out of town applying because it's a part-time job. It's not necessarily that community involvement piece that it just was for so long. And that's not a fault of anybody over there, it's just a reality that it's not that community hub for everybody coming together for the corn boil, you know, in summer, or helping at the summer fair with water fights or something like that. It's just not the same as it used to be. And that's not just for one department, that's everywhere. Again, so it's kind of, the transformation has occurred from the all one department, fire department, village, fire department, to being kind of a job for people, albeit a part-time job for now, and a way to get into the service of fire and EMS. So just, yeah, over twenty, less than twenty years, you've seen almost the whole department highlighted as village residents, just a handful. And it's probably no surprise that most of these chief officers up at the top are village residents because they've been with us the longest and it's nice to have chief officers relatively close in town. That's just kind of what's happened over the years. Page five is, and again, this is just kind of documenting how we got to where we are right now. We'll talk about the whys in a little bit. Page five just kind of shows since November of two thousand and sixteen, so three years roughly, all these black lines are people that we don't have on the department anymore. So that's, I mean, that's probably twenty-five people or so that we've hired over the years and just in the last three years, we've lost them, that they're not with us anymore. Now, we've replaced them with some, so I'm not saying we're two or three people per company like this, but the problem is, is we replace them with, again, not really village residents, the people coming in for a part-time job or to get trained despite the fire EMS service. And then they do move on to their full-time jobs somewhere. Sometimes they stay with us for a little while, sometimes they don't, sometimes they can't. There's a couple bigger departments in our area that if you get on there full-time, I don't want to disparage them, so I won't mention their names. If you want to talk individually, we can. But if you get hired there, their policies are you don't work part-time at any other fire department. And so, that's by union contract. Some are union-driven, some are just the actual municipality saying, we're not going to allow you.
A lot of it has to do with the way the workers shop.
Yep, work comp and pension, pension stuff and all that. All that kind of goes into it. But a lot of them do allow folks to stay and some choose to stay and earn some, you know, for part-time money or still help the village, but some decide they want full-time, twenty-four, forty-eight hour type of thing is enough for them. So I don't want to dwell on this too much, but this is just, it was a little bit of a visual image on the progression from, you know, that smaller village fire department into where we're at now. So now into the why. Why is it a struggle to keep people more than a couple of years before they move on to that job? Why is it a struggle to keep people that might not want to go into the fire service as a career but want to come help the village? Why is it a struggle to keep people like that even in these days? And a lot of it comes down to training. I put on here the struggles really because it is a struggle to, number one, hit all the objectives the state tells us we have to hit on an annual basis or a semi-annual basis, in addition to that initial fire academy that everybody threw. So you guys can read as well as I do, I'm not going to read through this whole list, but the initial fire academy is really an expensive, not expensive, an expensive program. We do it fairly cheaply in-house for the most part, with our own people, our own officers rotate times teaching, and Alicia McCoy does the line share, she does a great job coordinating our academy. But there are so many state objectives that we have to hit in order for somebody to become a certified firefighter, and we do that. But then keep in mind too, the fire aspect of what we do on that, on our side of the building is about twenty percent or less. So eighty percent or even a little bit more is EMS. We do, for every, for every one or two fire-related calls that we go on, it's truly eight or nine ambulance-related calls. So the heavy burden of what we do over there is EMS, and the second portion of that is EMS training, which is very expensive, as it should be. We're training folks to go potentially save lives, it should be extensive and thorough and rigorous, and it is. So if we take somebody from the street with nothing, it's going to be nine to ten months before they're even an EMT basic, which is just the first level, allows you to take vital signs and bandage injuries and stuff like that. So that's almost a year before they're even a basic. But what we really need is paramedics, which is another fully year plus of training through the college section, through the College of Lake County and Vista Health, it's our EMS system right now. So just right off the bat, if we're hiring somebody from the street, it's going to be at least two years before they're a certified paramedic that we can actually use on our ambulance. Remember, that's a brand-new paramedic. It's kind of like that joke of, what do they call the person that graduates last in medical school? Doctor. So you're graduated last, you're still a doctor, right? Still got that in you. A brand-new paramedic certainly is fresh on a class and we use them and we love them. But I've been a paramedic for twenty-three years now and I'm still learning. So it's just that thing, that phenomenon of, okay, we have a new paramedic, but we still need the veterans to lead them and teach them and get them through their experiences running calls on their own. So again, that's two years in the making, not to mention the five to six thousand dollars per student, the cost of those to go into that training. So then what? So then we have a firefighter and a paramedic after that two and a half to three years, and then they get their full-time job somewhere, and maybe we'll keep them, maybe we don't. Now, we do pay the four to five thousand dollars for a paramedic training, we do have them sign an agreement, but luckily, we haven't had to put it in play yet. We've only had that agreement around a couple of years. But we ask them to stay around for four years, and every year that they complete with us as a paramedic, it decreases their reimbursement amount by twenty-five percent, so hopefully after that four years, you know, they wouldn't have to reimburse for the paramedic training anymore. But even if we do have to put that into play, we're going to recoup a couple thousand dollars and we don't have paramedic to use. Go ahead. For the staff that you have, did we, did all of them start at the ground level and move up? Or are we, some are coming that they're already existing? Right, yeah. That's a good question, and I kind of refer to that on a subsequent page, but the question is, yeah, all of our people don't start from the ground up. We do, we have, we have to, otherwise we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have person. If we had to only bring in our own folks and train them up and use them as paramedics, we wouldn't be able to exist. Like, most of the north Chicago folks, they were, they came, I think most of them moved here then. Right, yeah. We have four or five north Chicago, full-time north Chicago firefighters working for us now. One of the reasons we can stay afloat for right now, a couple Zion guys and then some other scared folk type of things. That's a topic for a subsequent page, which is an important one to talk about here in a minute. I just wanted to hammer home the issue of training. So that's, I just kind of talked through the initial batch of getting them trained. Sometimes we're lucky to have some trained folks move into town or move close enough and apply to us and we can be almost with them right away, and that's great. But again, that's just the initial training. Just like doctors and dentists and all that, there's rigorous continuing education that we make our folks go through, state mandated continuing education each year that they have to continue to learn or stay fresh on their skills and their knowledge, so they know what they're doing when they go out on a call, and after five years, you know, they still know what they're doing. So that's another issue of retention of part-time personnel, the people that don't do this as a full-time job. What is in it for them after a few years of minimal pay, part-time pay, or in the case of some of the smaller agencies around the state of complete volunteer? And that gets old after a few years, and we're not really getting anything for it, right? So that's, that's one of the big reasons that the smaller completely volunteers departments around us really are struggling, because again, the requirements don't change whether you're doing this for a living or being a volunteer. The requirements to certify and stay certified, I'm just saying. And when you're not, when you're doing it for, not getting a whole lot out of it other than the satisfaction of helping people, people just aren't staying with that as long as they used to. So that's what that purple at the bottom just kind of says, that it doesn't matter if you do this for a living, every third day, twenty-four hours, or you do a duty night a week, or a couple a month, those requirements to certify and stay certified are no different. And so that's why it's tough to keep part-time folks that don't do this as a career.
Now, Justin?
Yes.
If you had a nursing degree, does any of that translate over into an EMT?
No.
So I'll have to go through the.
Still going to go through the full cuts. It kind of works the other way. We've had quite a few folks do start with us as EMTs and paramedics and decide, hey, I kind of like this, I'm never going to be a doctor, but they go into nursing. I can think of stopping ahead, four or five within the past five years or so who have taken this step into the nursing field. And that's good, that's good for them, it's a good career, nurses are in demand for sure. But now, if you're a nurse or even a doctor, you still would have to take the same curriculum of classes that's coming into your paramedic. Yeah, good question.
Does it journey cost, you say six thousand for?
Yeah, so the very basic program right now is about a thousand.
Okay.
And the paramedic program is forty-five hundred plus books, it's a little over five thousand for that.
Does that change much from year to year?
I mean, just like buying a car or whatever, it seems like it goes up a hundred bucks or so a year, just because I'm just at the hospital and the college, that costs to go up as well for instructors and materials and all that. So I went through in nineteen ninety-six, it seemed like it was a paramedic training back then was about a thousand dollars. So from ninety-six to now, about a thousand dollars to about forty-five, five thousand or so. So that's, the curriculum's a little bit longer now too, they're teaching, they're teaching quite a bit more than back in the seventies and eighties. Is the norm for, the department hiring them to pay for that cost? It depends where you are. Smaller agencies like us and like Newport Township and stuff like that, they do, we usually with that agreement to reimburse if you leave. The larger departments with the bigger budgets, they'll hire people from the street and that's your job now, that's your career, they're going to put you through class and pay you. Sometimes they even pay them to go, pay them on their nights to go, or pay to cover them while they're off-duty or whatever, so it just kind of depends where you are. But yeah, it's not cheap, it's not cheap to send somebody, and it's, again, time-consuming, it's years. So page seven just kind of hammers home a few more of those issues in a little more detail. Again, I won't read word for word, but the top one just says it's very common for us and other departments like us to bring somebody on, train them up, and now they're ready to go do it as a career, and sometimes people, sometimes you don't. Another huge problem that we do face is bullet point number three kind of right in the middle. You know, we can't follow every NFPA guideline, and for those of you who are not familiar, NFPA guideline is the national organization that provides recommendations for everything related to the fire service. What kind of gear, turnout gear, we should be wearing, how long it lasts, vehicles, striping on vehicles, all that type of stuff, so they all have recommendations. And the problem with not potentially following some of them is potentially be liable, silly or, I don't know if that's kind of criminal type of stuff, but certainly, if I knowingly put a firefighter in an old set of gear that wasn't fit to them, we could be liable for an injury or something like that. So they do recommend, their NFPA guideline says, after ten years, a set of gear should be retired. They recommend that a set of gear should be fitted for each individual firefighter. Well, how do we do that with forty people on our roster? And some of which won't stay with us for more than a year or two. And the set of gear is roughly twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars when you count the boots, the pants, the coat, the helmet, the gloves, the hood that they have to wear. We do a pretty good job of buying you two sets a year, I always budget for a few sets a year. We've got some grant money for some, we're going to buy some right now, a few more sets. About three years ago, we got a grant, a federal grant for ten sets, which is good, that's about a thirty thousand dollar grant, and that's great. So every once in a while, there's some opportunities like that. But again, so we buy all that gear, and for NFPA guidelines, after ten years, we need to be replacing it. So, and again, at what point do we buy somebody a new set of gear? And then they get trained up, and then they go, and then we're left with a set of gear that might fit the next person that we hire? But still, it's not a perfect scenario because it wasn't fit exactly, the size exactly for them. So it's kind of one of those circular problems that there's not an exact answer to, we just do the best we can, we certainly do the best we can with keeping people in newer NFPA compliant gear. But it's not a perfect system at all. So again, page seven is just kind of some more info hammering that home. Training and outfitting our firefighters and the EMTs is not a cheap proposition, especially when there's not a gear, and gee, they're going to stick with us for very long. But we manage, we do well, again, grants help and the fairly healthy equipment budget that you guys provide for us helps kind of keep a few, keep the line moving with five or a few sets a year here and there. For the most part, it works out pretty well. So I kind of, does anybody have any questions on the why? On the why we kind of are experiencing the shortage of bringing people on and being able to keep people? I talked through a lot, actually, I kind of just a few minutes here, but. So we talked about the challenge of keeping people, right? There's competition, they're going. Why do people stick, right? For the people that have stayed, why are they here? Well, I lumped it in kind of into three groups for you. I like the word you said competition because that's a bullet point on the last page, I'll do that in a second, but. So generally, we have like three groups of people over here on our side of the building. We have the career members, me being one of them, that wants to do this because we're trained for it and we have time off from our other job, especially if we live here in the village. Why not use our training and our skills here in the village on top of being a part-time job and earning a little bit extra money? So that's one group. Another group is the youngsters that we do bring on, usually to the two and a six or seven a year, the eighteen and nineteen-year-olds that do see this as a cool career. And so we'll bring them out and train them up. You know, a few of them will stick around with us for a few years until they move on to their career job or move away. I mean, we've had people, we've had guys get hired at Chattanooga, Tennessee, Austin, Texas, South Dakota, Chicago, so, good, that's great for them, it just doesn't help us very well. So, so the career members, the up-and-comers who want to do this as a career, and then there is a faction of the community that wants to just do this to help the community. They might be farmers, or, I mean, the farmers back in the day, we'd have to farm around here. Salesmen, you know, whatever, you name it, tradespeople that just want to do it, and we definitely have a handful of people over there. So, so when they fall into those three categories, that's kind of what keeps them here, is living in the village or living close and just wanting to help the village, or it's a decent part-time job, they'll give them a little bit extra cash in their pocket at the end of the month. Then there's almost an equal number who just decide after a couple of years, it's not for them anymore, or, you know, whatever. So, so it's kind of the why, in the lower end timeline.
If I could add something to that. If I could add something to that. It's also family, especially when kids, I know I went through the same situation. It's hard when you're working full-time somewhere else. You come and you work and have to sweep in and then make your required trainings. There was times where I didn't see my wife or kids maybe two, three days. And, you know, you're constantly trying to make the department requirements and, you know, keep up on your training. It gets, it does get stressful.
That's a great point. That kind of goes back to that training thing, is the requirements don't change whether you do this as a career or not. I won't say we've gotten loose with our training requirements, but we understand that some folks, some of our folks aren't at home for days at a time, depending on what they do for their career. So we definitely make sure they hit their training objectives through the year. We used to say, you have to make two or three trainings a month, or else you're gone. Well, we've relaxed that a little bit because we understand that's not feasible. Almost everybody is here every sixth tonight, and we allow them to do some of their training and training objectives on their nights when they're here on their duty crew rather than coming in just on training nights. But that's, that's true. Some people, even I question it sometimes, being in my career, twenty-four hours every third day, and then here in the office sometimes all day, and those two days off or meetings or whatever. But my family still sees me plenty of times and the benefits that I feel that I helped the village, you know, I'll, you know, I'll always just say, not bad enough, so. Do we, to this point about like some of those career folks that are on other departments, if someone came and said, hey, I only want to do days, I don't want to do overnights, do we allow that or? No, we don't unfortunately, mainly because it's not fair to those who do. And if we allow a couple people to say, I only want to help you guys out during the day, but not do the nights, well, I would have to do that for everybody, and I really wouldn't have anybody for the nights. So unfortunately, I have, I've had some people just say, and there's even a couple more north Chicago folks actually who live in town that don't work for us, mainly because of that nighttime. So I definitely understand both sides, but I just, I can't bring somebody on and not let them, or not have them do what everybody else does, it just wouldn't be fair to everybody else. So, good point, that's from that. So what do we do about it? That's the million-dollar question. A couple months ago, we approved paying hourly one spot a night, which has helped a little bit. The paramedics are able to kind of spread those hours around so it's not just one person on each company or whatever. But pretty soon, I don't think it's on the agenda for tonight, but pretty soon, I feel that we need to bump that up to two spots a night. Mainly because that will ensure that we have the ambulance covered. We'll have two hourly paid spots a night, we'll always have an ambulance covered, and then we, in a perfect world, keep three or possibly four people on that stipend, what we call it, at night, where we give them fifty dollars for being there, and then when there's a call or when there's a training session, their hourly rate kicks in. That would allow for the ambulance crew to pretty much always be covered, and then we'd have another two, three or four people that would cover the fire truck if they needed to have an assist, or be the second ambulance in a multiple call situation. Did you share the budget recap that I had given you yet? I know we haven't hit the budget cycle or anything yet, but in past years, I've given a budget, had a recap of all my lines with a breakdown of our staffing costs, derivative information, which I'm sure you're all for, it'll run line by line each year. But perhaps maybe this year, when you do get it, you'll take some note on the different structures that we have for staffing, nighttime, daytime. Some of our officers get a little monthly bump on their paycheck, stuff like that, so that'll detail our staffing costs a little bit more. So I don't want to bore you with all those details now. But two paid spots a night and some three or four stipend spots a night fit within my calculations anyway on budget numbers. And, you know, the six years that I've been there, done it, I feel I'm pretty proud of the job that I've done or that we've done, sticking in our, pretty much well within our personnel line, I don't, running this model, or seeing the need to have to expand a little bit. The other detail is just, you know, sometimes when we know bad weather's coming or we know we have the events going on. we have the events going on, we'll all approve some extra people to come in for those stipends or for the hourly rates. And again, we budget for that and that has never been a budget buster. Does anybody know what SAFER Grant is, other than probably you? Anybody know that, probably you? All right, I'll educate you a little bit. So what the SAFER Grant is, it's staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. It's a FEMA grant that will pay, it changes each year, percentage what they approve, but essentially will pay if you're going to hire or retain full-time personnel. And I know that's a big discussion, not for tonight, whether we ever are able to take the jump into the full-time personnel. We'll always have a need, we'll always have the need for our hometown folks and part-time supplemental staff. We'll never be a complete full-time fire department. But at what point do we consider bringing on a few? So we have dedicated staff here with the supplemental part-timers on the side. And so what the SAFER Grant, what FEMA has done over the past dozen years or so is they've offered incentives for departments to bring on full-time folks and they'll pay a percentage of it. Usually it's somewhere in the 75%, some years it's 100% of the first year salary and benefits, and then taper it off over the next couple of years. So it could be 75, 50, 50, 75, 50, 40, with the expectation that over those three years, you're planning the budget process to absorb the fully, the costs after three years or so. Some of the bigger departments will bring on a dozen guys or gals with the SAFER Grant. Some of the smaller departments like us might use it.
For three?
Beach Park started with the.
Yeah, there's a few, Zion as well. Zion's brought on a few over the past few years with, under the SAFER program, Beach Park as well. So again, we're not going to decide that tonight, but that's an option. If we continue to struggle with people, it's an option to buy some time, use some federal dollars to bring on some folks and give us a couple of years to be able to plan, to budget for them down the road. It's a very valuable option. But again, it is a big decision when you know you have to absorb that over the next few years. Or I'll say, hey, I'm going to hire you for a few years, but when this grant runs out, who's going to want to come when they know that they might not be safe after a few years? Is what I'm trying to say. So it's a big discussion to have down the road a little bit, but it's an option to buy some time and hire some folks using some federal dollars. I don't want to take too much of time, so I'll kind of go a little quickly on the last sections here, but wait, there's more. I know I have painted a rosy picture up to now, but it gets a little bit worse when you figure, we do have to limit our folks' hours because of the Affordable Care Act. That it's not only our line of work that says it, a lot of different businesses have to limit their employees' hours because they, you know, hit that threshold of average of 30 hours a week or so over the course of a year, then you have to offer health insurance the following year, that type of thing. We do have a couple of folks that we do allow work extra because, number one, they're available and we need them. And it's kind of like a handshake agreement that they're not going to claim health insurance after the year. They know they can't, otherwise it's dropping back down to where we were before. So that's really only a couple of approaches that that runs into, but it is a concern for us for scheduling. Overtime pay, there's a loophole in the labor law in Illinois that we can't allow our folks, if you're in a fire, your EMS agency, to work 53 hours in a week before time and a half kicks in. Again, it's only a couple of people that, you know, every once in a while, come into that level of hours, but again, something we do have to keep an eye on with the schedule for our scheduling. Availability and trouble retaining, we talked about, we beat that to death, I won't talk about that. But competition is the one that buddy brought up that I'll talk about just for a second. And that is, we're all, when I say we're all, the smaller departments that are relying on part-time volunteer folks, we're all kind of struggling for the same pool of people in our area. So we do have people working that don't have their full-time job yet, that are putting in hours with us, that work for Antioch, Newport Township, Beach Park. We all kind of, kind of drawing somewhat from the same pool. And so you got people like Lake Villa who pay more than us. Zion is trying to revive their part-time program right now. And so they're paying $25 an hour for firefighters to come in on a part-time basis, and even they're struggling to get people. But some of our folks do see that, and they're not running out the door, but they see that these other departments are paying upwards of $5, $6, $7 an hour more than we are, and it is a concern. Quick aside about Lake Villa is, Lake Villa, they're a pretty spread out department. They were kind of like us for the longest time, volunteer, and then they pay part-time folks, they have three people, they have four stations actually now since they're so spread out, so they keep three people in each of their stations around the clock. But again, that was starting to fail them as well, all part-time. They're hiring 12 full-time guys and gals in addition to the three battalion chiefs to oversee their whole operation. And they have two, a chief and a full-time chief and a full-time deputy chief. So they're going in the span of about two years because of need, from no full-time folks to 12, 15, to 17 full-time folks to man their stations, just like I say, within a couple of years.
They have to do.
And they have money. I don't know how they have money.
That's what I was going to ask you. Do they have the money or do they have to go up to referendum?
Yeah, no, I don't think they have gone up for referendum.
They happen to have one of the highest tax rates from any fire district around.
And so over these years, they've always had the shiniest equipment and they've gotten new fire trucks and ladder trucks, you know, regularly. So now they're having to ship some of that shiny, shiny equipment money over to personnel money. And I'm, so, and I'm not saying we can't do that here, we just can't, I know the money's not available there. But we can take some baby steps to get up to that, is what I'm saying. But that goes into the competition. Again, we're all, all of us departments around here are kind of struggling for the same pool of people. And sometimes it does come down to who's going to pay more, you know? And so again, I'm not at all saying our guys and gals are bracing out the door to go earn a couple more dollars an hour, but I know it's in the back of people's minds to apply. You know, which department do I go apply to? Where am I going to make more money? Where am I going to have a better opportunity to get trained up and get ready for this career? So it does matter, so you know, sometimes when we look at hourly rates and potential raises and stuff like that, that does matter for recruiting and retaining our folks. So to kind of wrap this up, and I'll turn it back over to Greg here in a minute, but the bottom line is, we do need to do something, even if it's small incremental steps of adding a person overnight or here or there, or looking at full-time personnel over the next year or two. We've got to do something. This is what we have now, really, and I'm really proud of our group for sticking with doing the nights and the nightly requirements and stuff like that, but it's really not sustainable more than a few years, the way we're losing people and not really being able to replace them for the long term. I'll leave it to Greg to kind of talk about how potentially we could move toward bringing on some full-time folks or expanding the part-time hourly basis with the funds that we have. Before I do turn it over, if there's any other questions, I know, again, I know I flew through a lot of this, my use of terminology that was confusing, but.
Any questions?
Is contracting an option dealing with? I was hoping that would come up because.
You're welcome.
In my opinion, I, there isn't a time and a place for contract personnel, both in the emergency service and private industry or whatever. My opinion is I'm not a big fan of contract personnel for a couple reasons, a couple main reasons. Number one, contract personnel are largely made up of similar people that we have, younger, loving the service, but want to do this full-time job somewhere. And there, so contract folks are still testing for their career jobs. And so we do see quite often, contract personnel just kind of like us, a revolving door. Now, when you use it, the benefit of a contract agency would be, you call Metro Paramedic Services for one, say, I need three paramedics, and they're going to find them and they're going to send them to us. But when those paramedics are testing and they get their job and they leave, you're going to get another one. You don't know who you're going to get. So secondarily though, that it's kind of a myth, they save a lot of money with contract personnel because you do need to pay them enough to be competitive, to maybe want to stay, but you're also paying that company.
And we still need the same equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have to provide, it depends on how your contract is written up with these folks, whether they provide their own gear or we buy it for them or whatever, but the costs are there, they're on the front end or the back end. So those are the main two reasons. The cost isn't as savings as people, as people think, and still is revolving door folks.
I'm not advocating for it. It's like we're overturning every run.
Part of my, and I would never say I dislike, there's a time and a place for contract personnel. We actually have at least three off the top of my head who I know work contracted other departments, a couple work full-time contracted Newport, a couple work, that's four, a couple work contract full-time out of Countryside in Vernon Hills. But all four of them are wanting to do this as a career, so they're still testing at other departments. So they'll be done at those contract jobs whenever they can look at them somewhere. And then, yeah, it's just not that huge of a money savings when you can have your own folks.
Justin, I just have to say, you know, thanks for this, and I think you do a great job in trying to keep the different shifts staffed.
And you guys do the job too of providing budget funds and, again, I'm proud of our group for having what we have with no full-time people. But yeah, over, it's not sustainable for more than a few years, I don't think. And I'll be happy to expand on any of this stuff individually or staff in the office or email or phone or whatever. And I could bore you to death with another hour of talking. Any other questions for that? Thank you, Justin. All right, thank you.
For the first, after the first month I got here, Justin and I sat down and we strategized and we talked about contracting, it was one of the first topics that came up. We met with all the chiefs and sat in a room to hear where their concerns were. What Pat's going to present tonight, what Justin's just got done presenting, the capital improvement request that I got this week, which was the deadline, so I could start reviewing it, it was $2.2 million just for this year in capital requests. The things we're talking about now are not things that are going to be remedied by an annual tax letting. Things we're talking about now are going to have to require some deep thought, some good analysis, and some decisions that we're going to have to make as a village that probably haven't been made before. The SAFER Grant, I think, is an opportunity. We're probably two years, maybe three, from having to change the model in this village, or the village is going to have to make a decision on what they want in regards to emergency medical service, which makes up most of the calls that the fire service now responds to. But the reason we're doing this now is because we need to plan now. We can't wait until the 11th hour, knowing that this is coming and not be able to respond to it. We have to think it through now and at least put things into place and have discussions, whether those are hard discussions or easy discussions are not important, there are discussions that need to be had. It's going to be my recommendation to the board that by January 1st, we put this second person on. Justin and I have looked at the budget numbers and based on the reduction in personnel, the openings that have been on shift, that money to a great degree offsets what the additional person's going to be, including the person that's current, that the board currently, or most recently approved. We also, I would recommend to the board that you allow me to do some research into something I personally had experience with someplace else, and it's a public safety tax that can be used and dedicated, however we want to title it, but that can be used and dedicated strictly to support the fire service. I'm not saying that's the answer. What I'm saying is, it could be one option that we put in front of us for down the road. I think it's a lot easier, you know, I was extremely disappointed that the public did not realize the value of home rule beyond the concept of, oh, you're going to raise taxes or so many other things, but one of the things we have to do with home rule is the latitude to utilize a taxing mechanism so it minimizes the impact on the village as a whole. I think we need to look at these things. We need to look at other sources of revenue that we could, otherwise, we're going to be stuck. We're a $5.3 million general operating budget a year. I mean, what are we going to do? So these are tough decisions that the board's going to have to make, but we need to make them sooner rather than later, and we need them to be informed decisions. And I think the public is very much more likely to accept a tax that they know that 100% of those dollars are going to be dedicated to support the fire service, rather than them questioning, saying, oh, they're going to go ahead and buy a new bat boat, or they're going to turn around and outfit new office furniture, whatever the case may be, or they're going to spend it frivolously. I think they're more accepting if you go, especially in this community who has deep roots in the fire service, I think you can turn around and say, this money is going to be dedicated strictly to fire service. I don't know all the intricacies that are involved with that because I haven't done enough research on it. I walked into a public safety cap scenario before, and, you know, that had worked out well for us when I was with the county, and, with Wood County, and it worked out real well and supported some of the things we needed to do. But I just want to remind the board that those are things we need to be talking about sooner than later, so.
Open. You're standing at the podium.
I am. All right. First of all, thank you for your time, and Greg, thank you for arranging this, so we can bring this topic up as well, especially in the interest of trying to be proactive in dealing with what we're now going to do with this new tool for financing some infrastructure improvements in the shared group business corridor. The information I gave you was included in the packet that I think I sent down back in the end of September, which is a lot more, I tried to boil it down, and in the interest of time, I want to run through a scenario there in just a moment. But first things first, if you look at the very first page, Exhibit 4, that is the TIP budget that would be approved and adopted redevelopment plan, which says that in a broad sense, not in a absolutely this is what will happen, but this is absolutely what could happen sense, we could see about $39 million worth of improvements in the shared group business corridor using these types of mechanisms. And what the TIP program provides for is a financing mechanism that actually makes it plausible, albeit not absolutely going to happen. In order for any TIP district to work, it requires private investment. It requires that the property values within the district go up over the base rate. So if there is no new investment, if there is no growth in the property values, then the TIP district as a whole cannot work. The way that it can work is totally dependent on how much that property value increases. Because it is the increase over the base rate that drives the new taxes. The new taxes can be used for the investment or the incentive. And ideally, you use that investment or incentive to leverage significant private investment, something like anything, and it can vary, but somewhere in the 10 to 20% range of TIP money to generate 80 to 90% of private money that would increase the property value to drive new taxes. That's kind of it in a nutshell. But again, anything that we do, if it does not result in an increase in the value of the properties as a whole to drive new taxes, cannot make the TIP work. And I'm saying that because within here, you're going to see things like infrastructure, investing in public improvements like a streetscape or putting new water and sewer lines in, and the immediate question is, well, how does that drive property value? It's not paralegal. So even those types of investments must be tied to something that says, in addition to this happening at this point, there's no private investments happening at the same time. And one quick example would be if we were going to put or expand a water sewer line north to the end of town, it would be because it was a new development happening at the end of town that was going to increase the overall value, could drive the taxes that could pay for that water and sewer line. Does that make sense?
We don't run it just to run it.
We don't run it just to run it unless it's tied to some other investment that's going to generate new taxes to pay for it. If you have that scenario, if there is an interest in private investment though, you can see how quickly unlocks the ability to do all these things. And I use a quick scenario here, and again, in the interest of time, I'm just going to jump to it, please stop me with any questions. I imagined a program where we would help existing businesses improve their properties, increase their own business, but at the same time, increase their property. their own business, but at the same time, increase their property value. And I took an example of one of the hotels in town, I suggested that if they invested in one of those hotels, as was suggested by the Herbaland Institute's developer discussion panel we had, that we might want to look at investing in our existing overnight accommodation stock while we wait for some new overnight accommodation stock. So I took that example. Numbers that I did some research on and figured what's an average investment, what's a certain thing's cost, I took the Northern Motel and said, hey, what if you invested fifteen thousand dollars per room and upgraded and added a swimming pool that cost a hundred thousand dollars? Oh, the investment is going to be about five-hundred-and-twenty thousand. The numbers today on that motel are, its assessed value as of last year was a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, it was generating about twenty-three thousand dollars in annual property taxes. If you invest five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, one-third of that is the assessed valuation, so that's about a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, that increase from the one-eighty-three plus the new one-seventy is what generates the new tax, that new tax would be about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. At twenty-one thousand dollars a year, you collect over the length of the TIP, it's, the TIP lasts for twenty-three years, but it obviously takes time to generate the new tax, take any figure you want, but it gives you an idea, if you put twenty years, at twenty thousand dollars, you would have four-hundred thousand dollars available to use as incentive, right? That's it in a nutshell. The scenario I laid out was to say, well, if we made a five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar investment, if we offered a two-hundred thousand dollar incentive, and they put three-hundred-and-twenty in fast, you can see at twenty-one thousand in new taxes every year, it would take less than ten years to repay the two-hundred thousand dollar incentive, that would be all of that? Does that make sense? And again, it's new money, but the key, the trigger is, they need to want to make the investment in the private fund, right? And the key to any successful TIP is that your incentive is that, that it incentivizes the investment, which means it has to be something of interest, something where they see value in it, understanding that they're going to increase their own property taxes or get a factor of some sort, right? It still has to be something that says, you know, are they willing to spend the three-hundred-and-twenty of their own to get two-hundred kind of free money?
Are there, like, standard kind of ratios for this, or is it really average situations unique in what we want to?
So the general rule of thumb is very simple, right? It should be, the far majority money should come from the private sector.
What would you define as far majority?
Well, it can vary. Rule of thumb, generally speaking, depending on the size of the investment, right, new development is between ten and twenty percent, right, as a rule of thumb. For facade improvement grants, where you're going to give a ten-thousand dollar grant out, oftentimes you'll see fifty-fifty, right, where you'll invest fifty percent of the cost of that. So it can vary depending on the size of it. However, in the TIP statute itself, you're required to justify the money being spent as being, in essence, an extraordinary item as relates to that particular development, that that developer would not otherwise occur if they weren't developing it this way. Meaning, if they want to develop one-on-one shared road, it would be an extraordinary cost for them to have to pay to extend the water and sewer line, so the TIP money can be used to cover that extraordinary cost. If you had a brownfield that had to be remediated, it could be used for something like that. If you're in a downtown district that didn't have sufficient parking, it would be an extraordinary cost for them to build a parking garage, so you could use TIP money to do that.
How do you, like, maintain, like, how do you guarantee their investment then while we make, you know, if we're making?
We don't guarantee their investment.
I mean, that's what I mean, like, so there's, it's still a crapshoot for something like that if we're taking on something big?
Yeah, so a couple of things, first of all, any betting of it has to be done, we have to provide financial statements, performance, that's where we bring in our consultant to do an analysis for us, to show, A, that the type of investment is permissible under the act, and that the numbers they're showing us make sense with regard to what it can generate and what it could be successful. The next part of it becomes a little trickier, and that is, what type of a risk tolerance do we want to take? And that's a part of this question here, is to say, because it can vary, all the way from, we could go out tomorrow, borrow money and give it upfront and hope that they build it, right? You might find yourself doing that if it is for a very strong tenant, and I use the example, if it were a hotel and we're a Marriott coming in, you might be willing to take that risk. If it's somebody that you feel less comfortable with, you might do once-termed pay-as-you-know, which would be a straight rebate. They would have to actually earn the money, pay, they would pay the costs themselves upfront, they would earn the money and leave taxes, and then if they earn it, we would rebate a percentage until they receive the full incentive. Obviously, it's a safer way to go, but obviously less attractive as an incentive, and you have to remember, you've got to balance that, if we look at our own marketplace, with how many companies are capable of waiting ten years to get that investment back, just because of their own financial situation. So you might find it more difficult to attract somebody's interest in our open marketplace because of intention. So finding that balance will be the challenge. The intention here was for me to at least bring it to you, give you some of the scenarios and try to get any of your own input or questions on, you know, your understanding of how this was going to work, because today I had a call from the property owner, manager at Subway Building, asking if we had any incentives for upgrading the building. I said, well, we have a TIP, so tell me what you want, and then we'll sort of...
So those action things, I mean, if that's the reason why we want to have those in place, those action things you have to add, what kind of, you know, timeline or timeframe on these things, because they all seem very important to have kind of in place on how we want to approach it before we give major requests, so what's the timeline like?
So I would hope to, over these next few months, certainly between now and through the next budget season, start to put together various pieces of it and bring it back to you as a body and say, hey, this is what we put together as a facade improvement program, we think it should be fifty-fifty, you know, we definitely think we have to add some measure and we're going to select the building owners that we think will increase the property value and have the best chance to do so, and we think that we should fund it by either seeding this thing or waiting till it grows, sits on money, blah, blah, blah. I'll start to put those things together and bring them back to you piece by piece. I will look at some very specific things, this motel investment being one of them, right, it's what we do, is tomorrow, somebody entails a minute, says, I have one of the best half-million dollars, if you give me two-hundred thousand, I'd like to take that all the way through to appropriate. And then I'd also like to take through to a program, if somebody walked in tomorrow and said, we'd like to develop one-on-one shared road with a new three-million-dollar development or whatever the nature is, how would that look? What type of incentive would we work it out? So that's my intention for it.
To complement that, just to let you know, we've asked Baxter Wooden to begin looking at what the infrastructure costs would be involved with street scape, sewer water, things of that nature within the TIP district, so we at least can have a few of those dollars left. Again, what I brought up earlier was, it's time for us to think about this now, and our opportunities for funding these projects down the road. We need the TIP to add money so we can use the TIP for what it's used for, and that's economic growth, so.
Yeah, it can be really a powerful tool, right, including things like pursuing the second phase of the street scape, you know, the idea being that if we're likely, if it's a timely enough project, even under grants, we have a twenty percent responsibility today, looking at the general fund, it's hard to imagine that we could ever do that. TIP should generate investment, and I ran the quick numbers on that, you would have to look at about a two-million-dollar increase in the assessed valuation of the entire TIP to generate enough money to pay for a two-million-dollar cost of the street scape. The value of the entire TIP today is seven million dollars, so it's not an insignificant investment that would be required. However, for a new development, the estimated cost of a new motel, based on our hotel study, a six-room motel, is six million dollars on shared roads. If a TIP district incentive could incentivize that type of investment, all of the sudden, these things become possible. Any other questions?
So overall, the increase in maintenance of the property tax structure is the key of this whole thing, is what drives the economic benefits, not only the TIP, but the village general.
That is absolutely right. But keeping in mind two factors, as you were saying, the more relief we can provide to the general fund for this area as well, the better off the rest of the community is. We can keep those taxes within that area and service that area, we don't have to take tax away from other parts, you know, to service that area, so there's that benefit.
Greg, any questions?
I'd like to adjourn the committee of all meeting.
So who?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Adella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.